Ready? All right. It is Monday, Monday, May 1st, 2023. We will start the meeting with roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Busca.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes. Next is the approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from April 17th, 2023, approval of minutes from April 24th, 2023, approval of street closing slash parade permit for portions of First Avenue East, Sixth Street East, Second Avenue East, Eighth Street East, Schroeder Drive, Canterbury Street, and York Street for a fundraiser for Cure Grin Foundation on June 4th, 2023. And the last on the agenda, consent agenda is approval of tree surgeon license for tree doctor services.
So moved.
Second. Busca.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
Next, Public Works.
The inspection of the small tower was done by K and W last week, and everything came back all good, so we're good to go on that. We don't have to replace anything, thankfully. The Water Department will be flushing hydrants this week, starting Wednesday, and they should be done by Friday. Just be aware of some rusty water. And then, we had a nice Arbor Day tree planting celebration on Friday. We had a great turnout of friends and family. We did a red flowering crab apple for John Smoss, worked for the city for 30 years. Thank you for everybody who came out. And we will be out this week planting boulevard trees. We had 55 trees requested this year, which is a great number, and they were paid for through that Alliant Energy in Black Hills grant, so it's all happy.
Okay, thank you. Next, Police, is there a report?
No, no, I was...
Okay, all right. We could ask the chief, too.
(laughing).
Do you have a report for tonight, by chance?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next, Administration.
We received notice from LTD Broadband that they have officially rebranded to Gigfire. So for people who have it, they'll just pay attention, and that'll start coming from Gigfire.
And I just now got a notice from Iowa League of Cities that the Governor, Speaker of the House, and the Senate Majority Leader have issued a joint press release saying that they have agreed on a proposal for the property tax legislation. They've basically stricken the House file in its entirety, and so it'll be most like the Senate version, where they'll consolidate tax levies, there'll be a levy limitation based on assessment growth, single date annually for bond referendums, and required taxpayer statement mailing. So they haven't had time to summarize it yet, to put it out to us, but it sounds like it just happened this afternoon. Unfortunately, they're going forward.
And that would limit us on potential property tax...
So the assessment growth will hurt us a lot, and then that consolidated levies is going to hurt, so... They kept changing the things, so I can't even estimate right now what the impact will be, but I'm sure the league will be coming out with...
Sure.
...some kind of summary, so I'll forward that as soon as we get more information.
Okay. Anything else? Committee updates, any committee updates since the last meeting?
I do. We had a chamber meeting last week, and just an update on what's going on this summer for the Family Fun Nights. Wednesday, May 17th, it'll be at the Fitness Center, they'll have an open house and laser tag, and that's from 4 till 8. Wednesday, June 7th, it'll be an outdoor movie at East Park, and I think the movie's gonna be Super Pets. And they will have concession stands and food trucks there. And then on Tuesday, August 8th, it's National Night Out, and the circus will be out at the fairgrounds. Oh, one other thing I was just gonna mention, the Sleepy Hollow Open House, they had it scheduled for this Friday, but they can't get it done soon enough, so it'll be Friday, May 19th, from 4 till 8.
Okay. Anybody else?
I didn't have a committee meeting, but I wanted to update the council and everyone else. Saturday, the theater had Mitchell Hall and the Tennessee Trio there. It was extremely well attended. If you tried to park downtown or in the adjacent areas, it was a little difficult. There was 240 total tickets that were, that were sold throughout, and after all the expenses, everything else, the taxpayers made $1,289.53 on that, on that performance. The biggest part of all of this that I saw was the amount of span where people are coming from to see these live events. Wendy said she had somebody stick around afterwards to talk about the theater from Story City, Iowa. So they're driving a considerable distance to come and visit our community, so we're looking at, you know, possible hotels, restaurants, those types of things. So it's become a very big impact into the economy that we've got all these extra people coming into the community to see these types of things, so it's great to hear and great to see going forward that there are so many other opportunities coming up, too, to see, you know, live performances, so...
What is coming up, is it roughly once a month?
She has, I believe she has, once a month, and even sometimes twice a month, but there's, we have the, it's the Elvis performer, Joseph Hall, that comes in. He's been coming in about once a year, and it's a huge success every single time it's come in.
I think it's this Friday, isn't it?
I think so, but I don't, I don't know the exact dates for sure.
That's right, I think he is pretty soon, yeah.
But I know that's very well attended, and everybody really seems to enjoy that, and that drew a big crowd the last time from up in, up in the cities even, too, I believe. So it's, it's great to see that we've got some tourism coming into our community for that, yeah, so...
Any other committee notes? Any comments from the audience? We'll move on to the regular agenda. We are gonna move one item from the airport from 13 up to number six, so we'll start out with number one, the resolution ratifying, confirming and approving the change in deadline for submission of bids and posting of revised notice to bidders for the Seventh Street West reconstruction. We need a motion?
Yeah, that's just a resolution to make the minimum 18 days or something, that it had to be posted on the public website for the bids. We had to move the bid opening to May 1st today, so you just have to do a resolution.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Number two, public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Seventh Street West reconstruction.
There were no written comments.
No written comments made from the audience. We'll close the public hearing. Number three, resolution, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Seventh Street reconstruction.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
Number four, consideration of bids received and resolution making award of contract for the Seventh Street West construction project.
Thank you, Attorney Counsel. So in front of you, you should have a memorandum stating that we opened bids for the Seventh Street West reconstruction project today at 2:00. This is the project that's reconstructing Seventh Street from Highway 9 to Fourth Avenue. Water main will be replacing fairway, same dairy sewer for a portion of it, and then storm sewer will be extended from Seventh Street down Highway 9, Airport Road, and then to a proposed stormwater retention basin located at the airport. This project had a base bid that included a six-inch concrete pavement with an alternate above eight inches based on some of the comments we received at the public hearing. The engineering estimate, there's a breakdown attached to this memo, but the base bid was about 3.2 million with the alternate at 3.3 million. The city received two bids. The low bid was from Generation X Construction, their bid was about 3.4 million, and their alternate was 3.56. Bids were also received from Skyline Construction up to Cora, Iowa, their base bid was 3.7 with their alternate bid right around 3.9. So like I said, there is a breakdown of the cost attached to this memo. I'd just like to point out that these, this is broken down into two main sections. We have a street subtotal and a pond subtotal. The streets subtotal from the low bid was actually lower than our estimate, so that will actually affect the assessments. The assessments will likely go down slightly, and the city's portion, which is all the pond and all the other utilities, was higher than, higher than the estimate, so there will be a little bit more clause per, by the city. Discussing the project with Generation X Construction, there is a possibility of reducing some of their pond construction costs if we provide them with some additional electronic data that they can import into their equipment and potentially have some costings on there, so that's something that we looked into, and they are, they're willing to work with the city and, and that, try to get that cost down a little bit. So in summary, we are recommending awarding the base bid to Generation X Construction. They were the low responsive, responsible bidder.
And you've worked with them before?
Yes, that is correct. We've, we've worked with them before, and they are the responsible contractor.
What about the difference between the six inch and eight inch concrete?
So our recommendation is to go with the six-inch concrete. Going through the process from the DOT, really, the roadway's kinda got three parts to it. You got what's underneath the road, as long as the contractor compacts that. In town here, we kinda have a clayey subsoil, so it's not the best, but that's kinda one of, one of the aspects of the road. Second is the actual roadway, so the six-inch concrete, the eight-inch concrete. Eight inches is better than the six inch, but then the third and probably most important aspect of the road is what the traffic data shows. So we have traffic counts on that road from a number of years back that we get from the state, and we know what the composition of vehicles going down that road. So we put in the worst-case scenario for the highest amount of large semis going down that road, and with everything put into the design process, the six-inch concrete is what, what we're recommending. We could go, could go eight to beef it up, but...
As we talked earlier, the Granger Road is six inch?
It's seven inch.
Seven inch, okay. And Highway 9 is eight?
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half.
That was the, yup, originally put at eight and a half. It's had some overlays on it, so it's got some additional pavement structure on there, but...
But we, we've also talked about banning the large trucks from Seventh Street, which would change the makeup of the traffic, too.
So I mean, if we, me, personally me, if it's gonna be six inch, then we'd be banning the trucks.
Except we couldn't ban the...
The semis.
Well, we couldn't ban the county from using it because they have a shop there.
All your preexistings would stay the same, but your, your truck routing, all your, your trucks coming in that service, the west side of town, would have to use a dedicated truck route, which I imagine would be past Calvary and, and down that. So...
So we're looking for a motion? Any other questions on that? Any motions?
I think that we're good with the six inch.
Oh, second, the six inch.
Make the motion and move forward.
Okay.
Krieger.
So it'll be a resolution making award of contract.
Yeah, so next on the agenda, then, resolution approving contract and bond for down...
Nope, we're still on number four.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
We're accepting the bid, right?
Yeah. Specifically, we're awarding it to Generation X. Correct.
Right. That was, that was the motion you made?
Yes.
And was seconded, right? Okay.
Krieger.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
So we're gonna drop down to number 13, and, and Joe is not here, right?
No.
Nope, so Joe Rollenfeld of Bolton and Mank to present proposed runway improvements projects and recommendation to apply for the DOT grant. Jerry Ferry's here to do his job.
Give it a whirl.
Give it a whirl.
Yeah, I think Rich got copies right away. We went through several different routes to get to this point. One of the things is try the best, it's an overlay runway. This will take care of resurfacing our runway plus all our cracks. And full well knowing that the cracks are something that we gotta start planning for on a yearly, every other year basis to seal in cracks. Now, we haven't sealed a crack in that runway since I wasn't on the board. I'll tell you how long it's been collected, okay? So we came out with the project, the overlay runway is 15 to 33, that's from one end of the runway to the other, just the actual runways. The total cost is gonna be a half million. State's amount that we'd like to apply for would be four to 1,000. Ours would be 1,000. Now, what do you got? Joe's got in here, he says, this current pavement condition index, of course, you guys have heard all this before, but it was done in 2019, and it's been deteriorating ever since, currently, so the average was 45 in 19. We fixed the two ends of the runway, I think probably a little bit, but it still needs to be replaced, cement or covered, an overlay. So what the PCI is recommending is we do a major rehabilitation project, which is just, you put three inches asphalt over it, we'll clean and prep all the cracks, and you put three inches asphalt over it and compress it down to two, okay? Once that is done, then they'll come back in, they'll repaint all the lines and everything, take care of the ground that's, we're gonna be that much, two inches higher, so we gotta take, put new shoulders on there, so airplanes ain't bopping wheels in there and that, so... How long will it, how long will it take? It should take that long to do it. Kurt did a bunch of legwork, he found a guy that was already working with Joe on cost estimates, and he can do it at a pretty reasonable rate, and he's even gonna, he'll do the, apply it and everything, so we got a dollar amount we can look at for that part, so gives Joe something to work with, so... I guess basically that's where we're at. If we need a breakdown, you guys got the, all the information as far as the breakdown.
Is that some email to us, or?
It's in the package.
It's in the Mac. Oh, okay, okay.
There's a breakdown of everything in there.
Yup. Package two, okay.
So is that 500,000, that includes the grade work on the side, then?
At 100% everything.
So you're saying half a million dollars total project?
Yeah, total project.
And the asphalt, they, they priced it going rate asphalt, just depends upon where there's a plant set up around here when they do the job?
Where was this guy from? New Hampton. They deal with four different asphalt plants, and Joe Rollenfeld had discussed it with him, and that's where we got this price, because he had quoted me this price for this runway that we have and stuff, and that would be, you know, sealing it, putting it on, doing all the trim work and what's associated with it.
Did he say it was gonna be one lift or two lifts? I mean, he used to said three inches overall, but...
They pack it down, they roll it, you know, just like...
But they're gonna put three inches down at one time and then roll it down to two?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Just like they do a rolling. An issue, or?
Nope, I'm just getting facts.
Yeah.
And is this something we'd have to take to bid eventually, too, then, if the grant's awarded?
Yes.
Yeah.
This guy kinda sets the baseline.
Yeah.
As Harry said, I know what my costs are.
Sure.
And, you know, if everything went well, and we got the award, the grant from the state, this guy can start this fall, can do it this fall ready.
Do we know, though, what the lifespan is if we do this?
Says that he has a few that they have done, and he says in 20 years, they still look really good. As long as you maintain, you know, they start getting cracks, expansion contract, cold, to fill them with the tar, and that's kind of a required maintenance on any road.
Right.
That's gonna extend it, but they've had some runways that, I think Carroll, Iowa, you mentioned, that's been in there 20 years, it's still looking...
And that's asphalt?
An overlay on it, you know, an overlay.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the cracks in there, I said that's gonna re-crack, don't care what you do.
Right.
But we gotta do maintenance on it, which we, we have not done. I think the last time any work was done on that shoulder, I've done it now, it's long before I ever went on the board, so way longer than this guy.
And roughly how much is the, the maintenance per year or per whenever it has to be done?
Well, the first few years, it probably won't be much, like the road, you know, cracks will start developing, be fine. Dean Wright says they, you know, they got their hot tar machine, but they don't have a wand, they not, not use the wand to fill in the cracks, but he told me that the Cresco builders use a clock at first, with small cracks, just to clock. Says that works really well. But then, as the years go on, you know, just like the road, you're gonna have probably more cracks and get something a little wider, so then they'll, probably the hot tar will be the way. New Hampton, their street department has it, and they just go out to the runway, if the east has some cracks filled, they just go from the street to the runway and fill the cracks. He said it works out real well for them, so...
Is that something that's in your budget, or is that something you're gonna come back to the council in a few years and say, we need to do service?
It shouldn't be that much. You know, it should've been, you know, maintaining the runway here with crack sealing. The last time it was done, five to 10 years ago, and since a lot of airports haven't been maintaining, they, the state has not gone out anymore to do crack sealing. Your airports are required to do it on their own, so, so it all depends on how bad, how bad your road or runway is. With our other consultants that we were working with last year, they were looking at, it was 145, just to fix the cracks, and then a half million on top of that to reseal the, you know, overlay. Or... The joints and the cracks, and... It's gonna be the same thing. Necessary, we can do it all at the same time.
Sure.
It seems pretty a good thing to have done, and with the 20%, I think, you know, a good project to get that taken care of for long, this is the future. It was in our future ALP anyway, in the layout plan, to have this done, and this covers several aspects of fixing it up and getting it sealed, overlay, and it should take care of it for at least 20 or 20 years or more in the future, basically.
What's, what's your experience with Scott? With, obviously, we know we're gonna have to seal it, but I would think that the amount of traffic on something like that with three-inch lift, I mean, five years minimum before I think you'd be looking at anything. You're, you're not driving nothing on it.
Yeah, it's not that much good. So it would be, first few, first few years, he said, would be minimal to seal cracks, but to get it done, it's always helpful.
Yeah, and I, I don't have experience with airports, so I don't wanna talk on, talk on that too much. I mean, like you've said before, your, your concrete's gonna shine through, and it's gonna, those cracks are gonna develop, and...
Well, the key is, is keep the moisture out before it gets cold. If you want them to have it sealed up in the fall, keep the moisture out. We done some legwork here a year ago, we put tile in, so that should help, aside, so there's no kind of... Since the tile's been in and the runway ends have been done, this is the first year that there was no heaving done on the two ends of the runway.
Oh, really?
Really, really did it. And the rest of the runway does not have a problem with frost heaving. The edges and stuff, most of the time, it's maybe, sometimes it's hot with snowfall and stuff, that cracks it and starts crumbling, so we don't have any paddles getting uneven, and I think the overlay is gonna work out pretty good, because the surface is really stable.
Sure.
Underneath it.
Sure.
So actually, kinda looking out here, it's just going ahead with the grant, though, right?
What was that?
But if you apply for the grant, then by the resolution, you are committing the 100,000, so if you get awarded it, you have to come up with a match, so...
If we don't get awarded, we are not...
We don't have to go forward with the project.
And the grant is due when?
May 23rd or something.
And you would find out by when?
May, maybe... May 24th is it.
Right, but do you know when you would find out on the grant?
Late summer, early, early fall, so August, probably.
So this is really a next-year project?
Well, it, it, yeah, it could be, but if it's kind of this coerness for asphalt, if we got it and he ends up being our bidder, he'd do it this fall.
Problem is with the bidding procedures, that takes a little while, so just determine the weather, whether...
We don't know until August yet. Well, he's looking at October, because we'd be done spraying, crop spraying, but we might be into...
Cover crop?
The cover crop.
Into, which...
How long, how long will the airport be closed? I don't know if I remember that.
You know, it's fast, they lay the concrete down, I don't think it'd be that long.
Right.
Probably addressing the sides, you know, the shoulders and painting, probably take a little bit more time.
Yeah.
Depends upon where the plant's set up and how many trucks they got, but they paved that stretch in two days, max.
Yeah, so financially, our, our budget's set for next year, if something like this came through, we'd have to do an amendment?
Correct.
Yeah.
Do we have the money?
We have, we have most of it.
So in your packet, I had written down, they have $89,000 in the airport trust right now, and I'm projecting a profit of about $18,000 from their general to transfer over to the trust, so that would give us a little bit over the 100,000. We would probably have to borrow from local option sales tax to make the payments on it, because with the grant, it takes almost a month to get reimbursed for it, so I don't know if I'll have enough cash to pay for everything, but we could borrow and then pay it back when the project is finished.
Any other questions, thoughts, concerns, ideas?
Okay.
All right.
That's our recommendation, anyway.
All right, thank you. Do we wanna move to number 14, then, just to stay on the same thought?
Would we have to make a motion on this?
So that is number four.
Yeah. Resolution authorizing submission of application for the Iowa Department of Transportation, airport funding certifying eligibility requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Busca.
Well, my lack of enthusiasm knows no bounds, but this is the best thing I've heard, so I'll vote yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
All right. So then, next, we're gonna move to number six. First reading of summary of proposed ordinance number 505, amending chapter 138, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to sidewalk grades. Do you have that for me? Sorry. Chapter 138, thank you, gentlemen. Chapter 138 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, sidewalk grades.
Uh, first reading of summary of proposed ordinance number 505, amending chapter 138, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to sidewalk grades. Do you have that for me? Uh, chapter 138, thank you gentlemen, chapter 138 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa sidewalk grades. Purpose, to establish sidewalk grade elevations on North Elm Street from First Avenue to Third Avenue. That was easy.
So I don't know, Scott, do we need to explain its requirement before construction begins?
Yep, as part of the assessment process, uh, this is just one of the things that we need to certify, what the grades are gonna be and when they're gonna be constructed to those grades.
Okay, you should've read that one.
All three pages of it?
Yeah. All right, and then next is, uh, number seven.
I need a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Whatever.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
And then number seven, resolution waiving the second and third readings in consideration of ordinance number 505.
So moved. Second.
Exciting.
Got that one down.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, approval of ordinance number 505, establishing grade elevations on certain described sidewalks in the City of Cresco, Iowa for the downtown crosswalk reconstruction project.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Number nine, public hearing to amend chapter 92, sections 02 and 03 of the City of Cresco Code of Ordinances pertaining to water rates.
There are no written comments on that.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Thanks Scott. Uh, we'll close the public hearing. Number 10, second reading of the proposed ordinance 503, which amends chapter 92, sections 02 and 03, Code of Ordinances, City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to water rates. No? All right. Section 1, uh, chapter 92, section 02 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Number 92.02, rates for service, water service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates within the city, Code of Iowa, section 384 dot 84. Effective July 1, 2023 A, first 7,000 gallons used per month at $6 per 1,000 gallons, minimum bill is $9 based on 1,500 gallons. B, next 60,000 gallons used per month at $5.47 per 1,000 gallons. C, all over 67,000 gallons used per month at $5.01 per 1,000 gallons. Section 2, chapter 92, section 03 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92 dot 03, rates outside the city. Water service shall be provided at the following monthly rates based upon water used and furnished outside the city limits, Code of Iowa, section 384 dot 84. One, effective July 1, 2023, A, first 7,000 gallon use, gallons used per month at $12 per 1,000 gallons, minimum bill is $18 based on 1,500 gallons. B, next 60,000 gallons used per month at $10.94 per 1,000 gallons. C, all over 67,000 gallons used per month at $10.02 per 1,000 gallons. Section 3, severability clause, if any section, provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Uh, section 4, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval and publication as provided by law.
So moved.
Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number 11, public hearing to amend chapter 99 dot 02 in the City of Cresco, Iowa Code of Ordinances pertaining to sewer service charges.
No written comments on that either.
Anything from the audience? Public hearing closed. Number 12, second reading of proposal ordinance 504, which amends chapter 99 dot 02 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to sewer service charges. Section 1, uh, chapter 99, section 02 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa are repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 99 dot 02, rates for service. Each customer shall, shall pay a sewer service charge for the use of and for the service supplied by the municipal sanitary sewer system based upon the amount and rate of water consumed. Sewer service shall be, first, shall be furnished at the following monthly rates, Code of Iowa, section 384 dot 84. One, effective July 1, 2023, A, $10.04 per 1,000 gallons within the city limits, minimum bill is $15.06 based on 1,500 gallons. B, $20.08 per 1,000 gallons outside the city limits, minimum bill is $30.02 based upon 1,500 gallons. C, $9.23 per 1,000 gallons for high volume users that are subject to industrial sewer rental agreements within the city. And D, $7.20 per pound for BOD 5 times 30 day average BOD 5 PPD for users subject to industrial sewer rental agreements with the city, where BOD 5 refers to biochemical oxygen demand. Section 2, severability clause, if any section, provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 3, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval and publication as provided by law.
I moved. Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Uh, 15, discussion on project funding and upcoming bond procedures.
So now that we have gone out through bids on the three big projects, I, um, handed out this GO bond analysis. So the total amount for each of the projects, um, I, is there kind of in the middle, um, 676,000 for the water tower, 1.3 million for downtown and 3.7 for Seventh Street. So our total projects are like 5.7 million. We have some ARPA grant funds left of $452,000 that we have agreed we're going to, um, use towards the water tower project. We've, we've been collecting some, um, prior assessments on prior projects, so I've already, um, allocated $32,000 of those assessments towards the downtown project. So then the rest is unknown, um, funding sources. We have applied to the NRCS, um, for a grant for the pond or that retention basin. We were hoping for possibly 300,000. They still have not, um, officially decided if they're going to fund anything, but they did say it'll be a lot less than that, possibly 100,000 would be the maximum. So I don't know if we'll get any money, I just put 100,000 in there as an estimate, hoping that we get that from them. On the, there's only two assessment projects that we're still collecting on, I've, there's about $30,000 left to collect on those, that's the Granger Road and the Second Street projects. So we can apply those assessments as they come in towards these projects as well, so that's that 30,000 that I'm estimating. And I had done an analysis, um, actually a while ago on past street assessment projects. So based on that, I tried to figure out how much people normally pay, um, because a lot of the assessments, people will come in and they'll pay before we even take it over to the treasurer, because they don't wanna pay the interest on it. So I am just guessing based off of the past, past projects have been about 50% paid upfront. I used 40% just to be conservative. I kinda think we might collect quite a bit of the downtown assessments upfront, um, because some of those aren't quite as big as the Seventh Street ones. But that's just a guess, the other problem with it is you don't receive those assessments until after the whole project is completely done. So we would have paid for everything before I would collect a dime of assessment. Now downtown will be assessed earlier because that's hopefully gonna all be done this fall, so by next spring, we'll get some of that assessment project, or assessment money in that can be applied towards the Seventh Street project. But those Seventh Street assessments will not be, we won't collect a dime until everything is all paid for, so, um, we'd basically have to borrow from ourselves and then pay ourselves back. So anyways, that comes down to about 4, 4.8 million dollars of projects to borrow money for. Um, we did a not to exceed resolution of 4.6 million, so even with us applying some of those assessments and stuff, we're still a good 200,000 short. We have a couple of options, we can do another public hearing and increase, do another resolution and increase that not to exceed, so we could borrow more than the 4.6 that we had originally, um, decided. The other option is we can use some of our reserves to pay for the projects and not borrow all of it. So down at the bottom, I listed some other possible funding sources and listed the funds that I believe would be eligible to put some money towards this project. Included in there is water and sewer, because there is a bit of water in sewer, um, especially water mains being replaced, there's not a whole lot of sanitary sewers, so I would not feel, we wouldn't be able to allocate more than what's the sanitary sewer portion. The number 620, the capital improvement fund, I've been paying for everything for the Seventh Street out of that prod, that fund. That fund is the $3.50 charge that we bill every month to everybody, um, and that's for capital improvement of water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer. And a lot of this project is storm sewer and water main, so we could use a lot of the capital improvement fund to do it. I'm already down to only $24,000 left in there, but if I don't pay back the 217,000, you know, that, that's what we're short up above. So, um, we could just not pay back that 620, that capital improvement fund. We earn about $80,000 of revenue every year and we just basically have a few office expenses coming out of there for expenses, so if we're not doing projects, we should be able to build that fund back up relatively quickly. I don't know if it, if I have questions.
So the already paid amounts of 320,000 are included in the 4.98?
Correct, correct. So if we don't pay any of that back, then we can take 320,000 off of our borrowing and then we get by with just doing the 4.6 and we just, whatever we've already spent out of the funds, we've spent. Down below, you can see the street trust fund has paid 32,000 for the downtown project. That was the street trust, did I say that?
Yeah.
So the road, road use tax fund has paid 26,000 towards the downtown, um, capital improvement 217. And we have borrowed 40,000 from the local option sales tax, um, that I had intended to pay back. That would be the only one that I would possibly think we should pay back, um, we don't normally use local option sales tax for capital improvement projects.
Is it a permitted use?
It is, we can do, use it for any essential general corporate purpose, so, um, it would qualify if we want to, so.
That, that might be a good option.
And we stay away from reserves, right?
So, so we've already used that 320, we just don't pay back our reserves of what we've already spent.
So the 320, we would not pay back the reserves?
Correct.
Don't you have any reserves now?
Like 9 million total?
We just wouldn't be paying interest if it was.
Right.
On bond, I think that would be the better way. Is that a resolution or what?
So, um, and I know one of the questions Amy had was, where's our debt limit? So our debt limit this fiscal year is 11,600,000, so that's the most we can borrow in general obligation debt, which GO debt means it's paid back with property taxes. So that's the, the debt levy. So we have 1.7 million outstanding, um, 1.6 million of that is from the Granger Road. So we'll have that 1.7 million plus if we do the 4.6, that will make us be at about 54% of our debt capacity. I believe several different people I've mentioned never going above like 80% would be, where you'd really get nervous. The city's always been low, so 54 sounds high, but I think compared to other cities, it's probably more normal.
So you're feeling comfortable?
So I do, um, I guess I would kind of like to stay at 4.6 as being the maximum we borrowed, but I don't know. The problem is we're gonna be using a lot of our assessments, um, so you're not gonna have those for your next project, but it'll be it.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you wanna do a decision tonight? Do we need to or?
So I, I guess I need guidance because if, I need to know what to tell the bonding people. So if we're going to increase that not to exceed, they need to get working on that, we need to get things set for the next meeting. So they need to know what, where to go from here.
I would stick at 4.6.
I would have to agree.
I would agree, I would agree with that, yeah.
Stay with that, then we'll figure out if, if we need to move money around, but we'll come up with the rest of the funding internally, I think that's reasonable.
There's no point in paying interest on something we don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, be different if we're making 8% on our savings account. Okay, so then I can proceed with that and we'll get working. I may need to pull in either mayor, council, um, we'll be doing a bond rating and so they like to have, um, some elected representatives there talking about, they basically are talking about the, what Cresco is doing to grow and, you know, more the fluff. We may call Jason Passmore and see if he could possibly be here too, because he's always good at filling in.
He's fluffy.
He could talk the talk, so. I can do the numbers, I don't do the fluff very good, so.
Have, um, the bond people given us any indication of what the rate will be?
They're still right around that 4%, I think is what he's using. I was asking him too, because I'm like, it's, every time I turn around, it sounds like they're increasing, um, but he feels pretty comfortable still using that rate, so. And then we're kind of in a crunch now because everything kept getting pushed back. We'll probably go later in the fiscal year before we sell the bond and then we won't get the proceeds till July, so, um, but I can borrow the money and pay it back once the bond is received, as long as we do the right resolution, so. I feel pretty comfortable with, we have enough cash on hand to proceed, so.
And do we have an estimate, if we do that, how much it's, what it's going to do to the property tax rate?
So this year, we added $235,000 debt payment in for this bond and I believe that it increased it by, is that a dollar 50?
I, I remember you saying that number, but I didn't.
I wanna say a dollar 50, but I think the 235 will be low, I think our normal annual payments will be quite a bit higher than the 235, so maybe more like 400. But 100,000 will be paid off next year, so we're not gonna have that bond payment, so. So we still might be about the same. That 100,000 is going off and we'll probably be adding, our bond payment will be 350 probably.
So you're talking about 1650 mil rate or?
For, for the.
We're at 15 now?
I think we ended up higher than that, didn't we, at the end? We changed it so many times.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have the. The levy information in front of me, sorry. I'm going to say we were around that 17, weren't we?
Already?
Didn't we end up?
Why is my memory failing me totally?
Total?
Already without this-
15 something.
With that 235 in there, so.
That would make the 17 then.
But again, I don't know what's going to happen with the levies with all the legislative changes too, so I don't know.
Stuff there.
The worst will come in a few years where they'll make us stick at 10.
Well, right, that's what scares me, that consolidated levy, I think scares me more than any of the other proposals, so. So that's why it's a good thing we have reserves-
Right.
...right now.
Right.
I said I was going to ask this question, I think you answered it for me, but I mean, where were you at with annexing?
So Rich was asking where we were with the annexation. I did retalk to John Anderson when we talked about it a couple months ago. He is willing to come to a work session and kind of explain the processes anytime we want to. It'll probably have to be on an off night of our council meetings, because we're the same as City of Decorah-
Sure.
...on those Monday nights, so we'd have to just schedule a different one. I kind of, sorry selfishly, just put it off, because between all the projects and the bonding and everything, I just didn't feel like I could take anything else on right now. But as soon as the bonding stuff gets going here, I guess you guys pick, tell me when you want to have him meet, if we want to set some dates.
I think there's some questions that was brought out, I think you were talking about where the sewer-
Yeah, and we have some information about where the sewer would need a lift station and stuff, it's not necessarily decisive, but it's certainly stuff we need to consider. And Jason, I know, has opinions.
Jason has what?
Opinions.
Do not do it on the road?
Yes, do not do it on the road.
So, so do you want to, or do we want to wait a little while, or, I guess it's totally up to you, I mean, him coming and talking to us is like a whole lot of work at that point, but-
I would imagine a couple hours, probably, if that, maybe, ish.
Probably, I mean, I don't know, I've never heard his presentation, so I guess I-
Tuesday or Wednesday night?
So I'm gone all next week, but not that I have to be here.
Maybe the Tuesday after our next council meeting?
Can we let you know? Because I know I have grandkids' boarding schedules and-
Oh, sure.
I don't know for sure what nights they are.
So May 16th would be the Tuesday after our next meeting?
At the moment, that doesn't work for me.
Okay.
On the other hand-
And then Wednesday could too, I guess, I'm just throwing it out there, so. Do you want to do a Survey Monkey thing?
It helps if I have an idea, if I, I have to pick dates, so, I mean, is there a certain day and I-
Then we're into the fair, the week after that.
No, May?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm on a comment. The week after.
There are five Mondays this month, but the fifth one is Memorial Day, the 29th.
I don't think so, that's-
I'm not going to attend if that's what you-
Yeah. Me too.
But you guys could be.
Maybe shoot, you want to do a survey-
Or the alternate Mondays to-
I can't do the second Monday.
Odd weeks don't work for you?
16th or 17th, 23rd or 24th, Tuesday, Wednesdays of each week.
23rd and 24th work for me, 16th and 17th are problematic.
So I can just shoot John Anderson an email, ask him if either of those dates would work, and then send it out to you guys.
Okay, and if not, then ask him?
If not, I'll move it, keep moving it out, but Tuesday, Wednesday are about the best day for everybody, probably.
This one, remember that one, and then I'm going to come back.
Tuesday's not good for me, but-
Well, Wednesday.
I could give up my call, you guys are giving up.
Shoot for Wednesday, that's fine.
Wednesday's hard.
Either one is, I'm good with, but 23rd seems to be more for everybody.
Okay, but, yep, I'll see what he has to say, and then-
Okay.
Any information you want us to compile before he comes, or this is just going to be a general?
I think it's a questioning.
Yeah, what's going on, the procedures and-
More questioning.
All right.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.